There have been times during these proceedings when my clients have said to me, "It seems like it's our burden to prove our case." And as we know, that's not true. And I would submit to this board that the testimony that was elicited on cross-examination of applicant's exports as well as the testimony from my folks indicated that the applicant did not carry their burden. We begin with Mr. Broder testified back in October. He confirmed that one floor of these seminarians and that three floors would be open market. And he recognized that that three floors of open market could have a different parking area. He testified that his towing company can't remove vehicles driven by visitors to his buildings that are parked in the street. And also, he didn't know if car share was round trip or if there are time limits. All those details will work out later when we're approved. Ladies and gentlemen, that's not proof, that's avoidance. Next, we heard from Mr. Scotch, whose testimony in large part had to do with whether or not the proposed building was in keeping with the neighborhood of the college avenue development area. He admitted on cross-examination that there was no four-story buildings on Main Street besides this one, or woodwork buildings. That no apartment buildings exist on Main Street with 50 or more units. That his proposed building did not have Federalist or Victorian architectural type details present. He stated, and he admitted, that the building will have a visual impact on my clients and the neighborhood. He stated that the proposed occupancy was well in excess of that which exists in the neighborhood. He stated that no other buildings in the neighborhood are shaped like an H. And he admitted that his building is wall dominant as opposed to the roof dominant homes for the remainder of the neighborhood on Main Street. Then we heard from Mr. Bogan. We didn't do any test pits, so we don't know if there's any hydrology on this site. He didn't know the time of concentration or the method of calculation. And what we heard at the time was, "Well, that was all worked out between the board engineer and the applicant." You know, the board engineer folks does not have a vote, you do. He testified that the basin low point is below the 100-year mean-high water table. He talked about the fact that it's possible that improvements implemented by this application will take away further parking spaces on Main Street. He stated that Main Street could be partially blocked during a trash pickup or delivery. He also stated that if there was compliance with the 36-foot aisle width on the ingress and egress, that the applicant would lose the entire middle row of parking, which amounts to 16 spaces in the garage. I submit to you, that's the real reason they're asking for that variance. Now, Mr. Olivo was next. And Mr. Olivo did not perform any parking study on Main Street, but he admitted that Main Street was at capacity in terms of parking. His findings were not based on field studies, they were based on census figures. He testified that car share includes the entire building and doesn't prevent residents from owning cars. He talked about that, well, he didn't take any consideration other departments across the street, which can't. And then he talked, he said that the, on cross-examination, census statistics cover all of New Brunswick, just not Main Street. So I just want to take one of those statistics and run it through, just as it is. There was a statistic that 34% of New Brunswick residents do not own a car. Ergo, that means that 66% do. What does that mean for this application? Without looking at anything else, of a possible 124 residents, then 82 parking spaces would be needed, not including ADA and the enterprise space. Then he talked about this theory of building additional spaces and they won't come. He admitted on cross-examination that that's not an ITE standard. He said that he didn't look at the alternate side of the street parking rules on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays on Main Street. And he also said that the .83 parking spaces per unit, the 43 spaces would be exceeded. And again, there's no parking on Main Street, but again, the parking that the applicant is doing is okay. So he then said that if a parking permit is forfeit, that doesn't mean that folks will park in the streets. And he finally said that he did not review New Brunswick's parking study, which Mr. O'Warney did. Next, we come to Mr. Hughes's testimony. He started off by saying that most properties on Main Street are two to two-and-a-half stories, not four, which his, this application calls for. He then testified that the financial viability of a project isn't one of the municipal land use purposes. Why is that important? Well, Mr. Olivo had stated in his report dated February 20, 2014, that the reduction of the number of units would make the project yield infeasible. That has no bearing on whether or not this applicant has satisfied the positive criteria and purposes of zoning. He stated that although that no use variance was required, he acknowledged that this development isn't RA5, permitted the RA5, and that it didn't meet the IM1 standards because the building's not universal to the owner. He stated that this is the only property on Main Street, redevelopment area, and as part of Area 2, and that the parking variance is not a result of the shalliness, narrowness, shape, or topographic condition of the land. He stated this would be the only apartment building on Main Street. And he agreed that if there's a violation of the zoning ordinance, then it's a variance, not a waiver. Then we get to the EIS that he prepared. And as was alluded to earlier, in it, he gave opinions on civil engineering, specifically drainage, traffic engineering, and he admitted that he wasn't qualified, he never testified as such, and he's not a professional engineer. He said that the buildings, which have now been demolished by the way, don't meet the historical criteria, but finally admitted that they were eligible for inclusion. And he finally recognized that it's really Schiphol's call, not his, as to that eligibility. As to the properties on both sides of the property question, he recognized they were set back close to 30 feet. Again, his property is five feet, I believe. He stated that the proposed building is bigger in terms of depth, width, than what is there now and in the neighborhood. He talked about the porch element and acknowledged that it's only on a corner of the building and doesn't extend across the front of the building, like the remainder of the homes in the neighborhood. Then I asked a series of questions about what the EIS that he prepared didn't have. It didn't take into account various other licenses or permits that are required. It didn't take into account water quality analysis, aquifer recharge, air quality, noise, damage or destruction of plant systems, damage or destruction to wildlife, steps to minimize environmental impact. It didn't discuss alternate designs, and it didn't contain any map. Now, why did I ask these questions of Mr. Hughes? Because those are the requirements of your ordinance, specifically 17.08.040, capital H, one, small h, small number one. That's the only place in your ordinance I was able to find EIS requirements. He also stated that the building was not Italianate or Federalist style, as if the size, scale, and setback, not the properties, aren't enough. Finally, he stated that Mr. Hughes', Mr. Olivo's report had a level of service analysis, and it didn't. Next came the testimony of my clients. They're not business competitors. They're not objectors. They're people. Jennifer, Alejandro, John, and David, just like you and me, except they live at ground zero here, next to a potential disaster. Mr. Mills testified to the reality of the parking situation on Main Street. He stated that cars are parked illegally all the time on Main Street, irregardless of whether permits exist. In fact, he stated that the parking situation is so bad on Main Street that on occasion, he and Professor Drakewater have asked, have had dinner guests or tried to have dinner guests, or had repairmen come to their house. And what ends up happening is that these guests or these repairmen, they end up going back to where they originally came from because they, after driving around for a long time, they can't find parking space, they can't get to their parking. He made the point that depriving people of parking spaces is a bad way to encourage the use of public transportation. He said, he talked about the existence of big gaps in public transportation, and that relying on public transportation is not feasible. He talked about the large parking lot in Redevelopment Area 2, which has been reconfigured so that the college avenue entrance was, or exit, excuse me, was removed, so that all ingress and egress is now on Main Street, across the street from the entrance to this proposed development. When you couple that with the increase in parking at that location, from 20 to 120 spaces, it's clear that this is a very hazardous circumstance. And there's been no proofs and no analysis by this applicant on that point. He talked about the college avenue redevelopment plan Area 2 intent, contemplates development ancillary in support of college uses. And he stated that just providing for one floor of seminary and three floors of open market runs contrary to that intent. He also talked about the master plan or the redevelopment plan calling for the development to be in harmony with adjacent buildings. And his testimony was that this envelope filling, view obstructing, daylight blocking, bulk would not do so. He then talked about some redevelopment guidelines not being met. First of all, one A, B, and C, and there were exhibits, I think they were '07 to '11. He showed the exhibit of the existing setbacks scale, and was uniform throughout the neighborhood, but it wouldn't be if this application were granted by this board. It fails to meet one A, B, and C. He also stated that the design of the building falls short of the redevelopment area requirements one C and one F, because the side and rear elevations don't match the front of the building for adjacent buildings in the immediate area. He stated that this application will discourage homeownership in the area contrary to the master plan. Next, we heard from Alejandro Perona. He started his testimony by saying that the applicant supplied no data to support the Main Street parking patterns. He stated that the plans show that the parking eliminates, or parking is eliminated on Main Street due to the improvements such as the hydrant and the access and egress to the property. To exhibit '03, he talked about concerns of excavation in the neighborhood, creating sinkholes, landslides. No studies have been done on this. He then, and this goes back, this, my next comment goes back to the testimony of Mr. Bogan somewhat. He talked about his basement being four feet, two inches below ground level, and how water comes in, even though they went to the trouble to do a full-scale sealing of the basement only a year before. The applicant has not shown that the drainage will not impact the surrounding neighborhood, particularly those down gradient from front. He went through exhibits showing how the building's shadows will affect them very negatively. He finally stated that there was no proofs to verify the pre- and post-development rate. It's not enough to say again that the board engineer reviewed it and said it's A, okay. Then we heard from Mr. Warrenier, who was qualified as an engineer and a planner. He began his testimony by stating that the site plan design is dangerous. He talked about how the garage should be one way in and one way out, and not just one driveway. He said that creates unsafe circulation, and specifically, creates a dead-end aisle without a place to turn around. He talked about the ordinance requiring 96 parking spaces, which is, it's not de minimis, it's a, it's a big shortfall. Unlike Mr. Olivo, Mr. O'Warney did a parking study up on Main Street, and it showed that there aren't any parking spaces available on Main Street. And it also showed that not asking for permits is worthless, when there's no parking to give up in the first place. He stated that the applicant provided no documentation for the claim that failure to grant a variance for parking would not be unduly burdensome. In fact, he said that the parking variance is over burdensome due to overdevelopment, not due to physical conditions on the site. He said it was contrary to the public health, safety, and safety by reducing the parking requirement in an area significantly, significantly short of parking. So he had some conclusions. He talked about the severe adverse impact on the surrounding residents of this application. He talked about the building not being in conformance with adjacent properties. He talked about there not, there's not enough on-street parking available. He talked about forfeiting parking permits is meaningless. He talked about the fact that you know, did not do any studies to show that the numbers are correct as required by the RSIS. He stated that the parking shortages were verified by the Rutgers and New Brunswick studies. He stated specifically that if there's no off-street parking, you've got to comply with the ordinance. You can still get de minimis. In his opinion, he said 5 to 10%, but certainly not 55%. And even if you do that, you have to do a detailed study, not done here. To the extent Mr. Warrenier gave planning opinions, there was some crossover. I just, again, for the record, wanted to introduce him as qualified as a planner to negate the statement by Mr. Rainfall that his testimony not be given a full weight by this board. I believe on redirect examination, I asked him about the parking standard. There were some questions about the parking standard in the master plan of .5 spaces per bedroom. That was never adopted, he confirmed it. Next, Professor Drakewater testified. He stated that he's lived on Main Street since the 50s, and that the neighborhood has always had front porches and small lawns. When he lived at 29 Main Street, since demolished, he found his strawberry artifacts there, and was marked as, we put it in that ziplock bag, which somebody on the board found, thanked him very much, as '025. Why is this important? Well, folks, there's variances here. There's one step everyone agrees are necessary. And in order to satisfy the positive criteria for those variances, you must advance the purposes of zoning. And one of the purposes of zoning is purpose J, which is to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts, open space, energy resources, and valuable national resources in the state, and to prevent urban sprawl and degradation of the environment through the improprieties of land. This property has been deemed eligible into inclusion into the status of local register, and Professor Drakewater's findings only buttress the fact that this application will not only not promote the land use purpose, but in fact will degrade this historic site. He lives one door away from this proposed development, in one of the oldest homes in the city. And in this area where he lives was a Revolutionary War dumping ground. He talked about the fact that there were cobbler mines there before the Revolution. That's how Main Street got its name. He stated that the building in no way relates to the neighborhood, that the bulk overshadows the neighboring residential area, that the setbacks are nowhere near in line with the neighboring buildings. It doesn't have a front porch or one. There's no green space, and it's not in harmony pursuant to the redevelopment plan at all. He indicated they weren't re-noticed either when the zoning took place. Then we come to the testimony of Jennifer O'Neil, who stated at the outset that she had a concern about light liquid construction creating a fire hazard. And the board decided against getting more details and, or suspended hearings and moved on. She then stated that she was not noticed when the property was rezoned, and to make it clear on the record of my position, this constituted not only a reclassification of zone boundary, but a change of zone, because the apartment buildings were allowed in the zone previously, allowed one or two family, and now it's mid-rise. So that's, that's a change of classification. Boundary lines also changed outlining 17 to 29 Main Street. There's specific requirements of notice, it was not, it was not done. And again, that's jurisdiction, that's up for previous. She then talked about, she talked about 31 Main Street for a moment too, and she said, you know, "It's not Area 2 of the redevelopment plan, but it's owned by Rutgers at the time of the application, still owned by them now." Which is interesting because the stated intent of Area 2 is to provide development of uses that are ancillary or in support of college uses in the neighborhood. She lives in the neighborhood, just like, in a neighborhood just like all of you do, and she doesn't want a building of this magnitude five feet from her property. She did say that she, that she would, you know, stand behind responsible development in this regard. She, she presented exhibits, '08, '19, and '20, which showed collectively, no four-story buildings on Main Street. Almost all houses having uniformed setbacks, rear guard setbacks of 40 to 50 feet, two-and-a-half story structures with front porches. On one occasion, she indicated that respectfully, the applicant's architect said that apartment building was on Main Street, and that was denied by only the team. She stated there was nothing similar to the proposed building adjacent to, of the proposed building to those adjacent to or north of 17 Main Street, or south of Main Street for that matter. There's not a single apartment building on Main Street between College Avenue and East and Avenue. And again, the buildings are consistent in height, scale, style, and setbacks. '020 shows more consistency of building height and setbacks in comparison to 5A zone. And it shows that the proposed building will block views both ways. It will destroy the character of Main Street. It's inconsistent with the existing pattern of Main Street, the proposed building that is. And she talked about her house being cut off from the rest of the neighborhood. She stated that this shadow study still remains the same, so that that minor adjustment that was made on the fourth floor is of no moment to the, the shadow study's still the same. We'll talk about that more in a second. She stated that that will turn their property into a fishbowl due to the loss of light air and open space, which she termed as dead estate. Apartments, the four-story apartments run the length of the property, and the way that they enjoy this property will never be the same again. Note, there's been no discussion of how the other three sides of the building to impact on the neighbors. She stated that it would fill the envelope of the property and severely impact people or the surrounding homes. And she, I thought she had an interesting perspective. It's not how the passerby passing from the building from across the street views the building, oh, they won't see the fourth floor, okay? It's, it's not about that, it's about the people that live in the area. And that's something I'd like you to focus on in your deliberations. Then she, she gave what I thought was a great example of how, of how ludicrous this application really is. She stated that the new seminary building, which was, you know, just built, two-and-a-half stories and half the square footage of this building. So clearly, it doesn't make sense. Exhibit '024 talked about filling in the gap will destroy the aesthetic character of the area. And P.S., as an aside, aesthetics is an important land use goal under Section 2I of the Municipal Land Use Law, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. This land use purpose is not only, is not only not being approved by this application, but frankly, it's being a masquerade. It's filling in, it will deaden aesthetics of the area, and it will, and this is how communities disintegrate. To offer an opinion to the country is frankly, ludicrous. She reiterated that it was impossible to park on Main Street on a daily basis. There's nothing minimal about parking areas. This from someone who, who works at home nearly every day of the week. She stated that Rutgers, Death, Caldwell, Hallowell, the City of New Brunswick, and CMA are churning perfect storm in this neighborhood with their entrance. That the entrance, for Mr. O'Warney, that this is, you know, is unsafe, and it's compounded by the entrance to the facility across the street. For that matter, I cite the case Lino's Appliance Center versus SITDA, 156 New Jersey Super 257, which gives the planning board authorization to deny a site claim because the ingress and egress is unsafe. And to that end, she showed exhibit '011, in which it showed five construction trucks blocking the entrance to the Hallowell ingress and egress. And then traffic going into oncoming traffic to navigate Main Street. She asks, and I ask, at part of voting, you put yourself in her shoes. If there was a four-story building going up five feet from your house, and all the standards that I've argued and that have been testified to have been violated, how would you react? Finally, there were three more comments that she made that I want to put on the record. She stated that people double park now, and she questions the ability of emergency access for vehicles to access Main Street as a whole, let alone the property. Then in response to test 20, I'm not sure who, whose it was, she stated that there was no correlation between students living closer to campus and having fewer cars. Then she alluded to a conversation she had with Mr. Broder, in which he said to her, "You live in a city, you have to expect you might end up living next to a big building, right?" Now, I don't know if that's Mr. Broder's concept of planning and zoning in the city of New Brunswick, but I submit to you, it shouldn't be yours. Next, we heard from Mr. Gimm. And he first cited this Section 5D on pages 10 and 11 of Redevelopment Plan, and emphasized that the plans to be developed have to be subject to the zoning ordinance of the city. And he, at that point, took issue with Mr. Hughes's position, which is essentially, "Well, since low and mid-rise is not defined in the redevelopment plan, you know, then what's proposed here, it must be low and mid-rise." However, he said, "Wait a minute, it is defined elsewhere." He talked about six zones that had it. He talked about low-rise being 16 units per acre, which would mean eight units for this property. And he talked about mid-rise being 50 per acre, which would mean 25 acres permitted here. The proposed use, as I said earlier, farcese, even the most conservative criteria the city of New Brunswick has on density. 52 units instead of 25. Only a zoning board can grant that variance pursuant to 40, 55, 5D, 70, D5. He then stated that you can't find the density standard, it does not apply because the redevelopment plan does not define low and mid-rise differently, that it does not aggregate the bulk or other standards of the zone. It, the plan makes reference to the IM1 zone rates and all other ordinances of the city. Kept emphasizing all other ordinances of the city. To not find that a D5 variance is not required, because as I said earlier, you have to ignore all the other ordinances in the city, you can't do that. He reminded you that the goals and objectives of the master plan remain in effect when they are not inconsistent with the redevelopment plan. He also stated from a planning perspective that the design standards in the redevelopment plan are crucial in this application because of the issue of harmonious development in the redevelopment plan. He stated that there are still portions of the 2004 master plan that are not changed by the 2011 reexamine, which should concern this board. Starting on page 109 and 3 of the master plan, you talked about how it stated that conversion of single and two-family homes into rentals reduces homeownership opportunities and creates parking problems and local traffic concerns. That's still an issue. The parking issues, due to the prevalence of student housing, as he stated was as relevant in 2015 as it was in 2004, still an issue. That you can't convert low-density housing in multifamily That you can't convert low-density housing in multifamily units when inconsistent with the zoning of the area, still an issue. That infill development isn't at density, at a density consistent with the character of the neighborhood, still an issue. It doesn't complement or enhance the neighborhood, still an issue. He talked about the housing plan discusses the preservation of existing neighborhoods. This doesn't, still an issue. He talked about how that master plan wanted to create greater levels of homeownership. Well, this application doesn't do that, it doesn't do that. It increases rentals. He talked about maintenance and improvements to the existing housing stock, still an issue. Then he talked about the two thousand eleven reexamine. The need for additional student housing and new owner occupied or rehabilitative housing being complementary. It's, this application's not complementary of what exists on Mine Street, I think everybody can see that. It doesn't say build as much student housing as you can. It says strike a balance. He testified that the parking variance was not diminished, not even close. He says that we can't use the RSI standards for student housing when only one floor is rented to students. He agreed with Mr. Hughes that you can't have a C-one for a self-impulsed hardship on this application. But as to C-two, he stated that providing less than half the parking plan doesn't meet the C-two standards. It doesn't advance the purposes of zoning, it doesn't balance the positive and the negative, which is, which is, you know, to be instructed on later, I'm sure, by Mr. Enfield. He stated there's no purposes of the annual buildup can be advanced by this, by this application when parking provided is less than half. He told you, when it comes to the data criteria, he told you to focus on the testimony of my clients regarding substantial negative impact to their block. The applicant failed to carry their burden. He said, I don't see how you can say it won't have a dramatic impact. Then he got to the design standards and stated that these are the most important language in the College Avenue redevelopment plan from his point of view. He quoted paragraph one A, I believe it's on page nineteen, that all new buildings should be related harmoniously. He stated that doesn't mean at the corner, it means next to across the street. And he referred to all the exhibits that Jennifer O'Neill put into evidence. He stated the setbacks, he talked about the applicant having five feet and versus the other properties in the neighborhood which had far more than that, not harmonious. He stated that the applicant doesn't have steps or a porch, you know, in the front, not harmonious. Buildings on either side are two stories with peaked roofs. This application is four stories and the roofs are all the way across, not harmonious. Fifty-two units versus late eighteenth and twentieth century houses with peaked roofs, not harmonious. He talked about paragraph one B of the plan, height and setting, not harmonious. He talked about the building design elements, color, texture, facade, materials, not harmonious. He stated that you should strengthen the particular urban design features of its locale. In this regard, he agreed with Ms. O'Neill in Agador that it would tear apart and simply that, again, not harmonious. He said to allow an exemption from the foregoing design standards, you have to find that to promote the functional or desirable visual environment. And he posed the question, is it really necessary to build this big to promote a desirable or functional visual environment? He didn't think so, and you shouldn't either. He also talked about allowing an exemption if it relates to an element of the overall plan for design or redesign of a structure. Well, we didn't just deviate here, they knocked the buildings down. In short, he stated that the design standards and guidelines of redevelopment plan were not met. The exceptions were not met. The building doesn't have to be this big. It does meet the positive criteria. In fact, he said the goal isn't to build as much student housing as you can, yet the applicant concedes that the top three floors are open market. He referred to the negative, first prime of the negative criteria, says, don't listen to me, listen to my clients. And as to the second prime of the negative criteria, he said, there can't be, there's no way you can say that the application does not have a substantial impact on a parking standard that was just adopted two years ago. Now, there were some, a couple of additional folks which gave testimony, that weren't my clients, during the course of these proceedings, which I think bear, were interesting with respect to some of the testimony given with this application. First of all, back in November, there was a Nancy Beers study, who was a pastor living in thirty-five Mine Street. She's testified that parked cars block her driveway on Mine Street on a daily basis. She stated she gets a lot of calls to get somewhere quickly and somewhere in a hurry and she can't always get there. She also indicated that she experienced a decrease in water pressure and no studies were done on the new infrastructure on how that will impact her situation that way. She then stated that the nearest grocery store was closed and there's no public transportation available. Then there were some comments made by, I believe it was Messrs. Kyle and LaGrina, the shopping being more than half a mile away, there's no public transportation and anyone who lives in the area needs a car. Now, my clients are within two hundred feet. But just because a witness is not within two hundred feet, they can also object and the board respectfully must consider the evidence presented by these parties. Particularly in face of Mr. Lido's testimony that mass transit is the justification for apartment, so pardon the justification. Then we heard last month from a Ms. Gray, who was a Rutgers student without a car. And what she said was, was that the public transportation in New Brunswick is very poor and it takes her all day to go food shop. In closing, ladies and gentlemen, it doesn't matter how many times this developer has been in front of you and gotten approvals or has been in front of the redevelopment agency and gotten approval for a prior version of this application. Here's the first time for everything. You have to do the right thing by your ordinance, your master plan and your College Avenue redevelopment plan. The standards aren't met and lack of hard data is at the heart of it. I ask you to deny this application not only for my clients, but for the citizens of Mine Street. Uphold your grievances. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Are you prepared to give your summation now, Mr. Kosa?
Some time now, I'll never be.
Yes.
I don't know if you wanted to take a free break, I just, for time purposes, I will not be as, as long as he's.
Please proceed with your summation, then I will be.
Just as he's indicated, I also want to thank the board for their time and their patience. And, you know, I realize that it's been a long and grinding process. Somewhat unusual, I think, many applications that we have before both boards in the city don't really have this much intense testimony and back and forth. And the time is a factor for everyone, and again, I do appreciate it. I just want to put a couple of things in perspective. This is basically a site plan application in accordance with a redevelopment plan that has one variance and one design waiver. To clarify, I think the references to design waiver, there was a reference to landscaping design waiver. My client indicated on a record that that was, that we were going to comply with that requirement, simply putting additional shrubs on two sides of the building. The only design waiver that is being requested here is the driveway width. One that has been customarily done in the other units they have built. And I think it's important for the board to understand that because much of the concern, consternation, speculation about what this building will do and what it won't do, we really come down to a site plan application with a variance. I think significant variance, we understand, but a variance. And I think that the objectors want to dismiss the fact that this plan, not only my client's plan, but their redevelopment plan, the fact that it has gone through an approval process is not relevant to your consideration. But I suggest to you, it's very relevant. It's very relevant because much of what is being argued by the objectors is that you should ignore the standards that are in that plan. And they're also going so far as to argue to you that there are jurisdictional issues here because you're really not complying with the plan. And I'll touch on that in a moment. But the reality is, the process that got us here is very, very relevant because it says a few things. First of all, it says that the consideration for the detail and requirements in this plan were reviewed by this planning board several years ago. And a recommendation was made to the city council. Public meeting here, public meeting before the city council. And the city council then took public action and reviewed the detail of that redevelopment plan. Instead, these standards, after a public comment, these standards are the standards that we want the board to consider in reviewing that actual application before. Now, the objector can argue that you're not interpreting or the planning department's not interpreting those standards correctly. I submit to you, that is absolutely not the case. We're not here and I'm not going to take your time now to go point by point as to why he believes jurisdictionally we shouldn't even be here and that there should be a D-variance because the planning office historically has been interpreting what density is wrong. We're not going to get into that. I'm assuming at some point in time, one or the other of the party sitting here are going to be arguing that before a judge somewhere. The jurisdictional arguments I respect, I disagree with. And I believe it's important, one of the jurisdictional arguments that I think it directly affects Mr. Gemma's credibility, which I'll get to. But the process that this, that has gotten us here, as I've indicated, has been a very public process. The city council is charged with the responsibility of its master plan. It's responsible for redevelopment plans and there are a number of redevelopment plans that this board is very familiar with. I think the city has been very much on a cutting edge and progressive in the utilization of redevelopment plans to redevelop this city, which has been acknowledged by the objectors, has been a very positive thing for the city. A public process where the city council deliberated and said, these are the standards that we want to apply in the College Avenue redevelopment area and in this location in particular. That process results in a redevelopment plan that then goes to another public body, the city's redevelopment agency, for consideration as to whether or not a developer who comes before it seeking to be designated is qualified. This developer couldn't be here tonight before you if it wasn't determined in a public meeting that it was qualified to develop this site. More importantly, the redevelopment agency is charged with the responsibility determined whether the concept that's before it, which is essentially what you see here tonight scaled back, which are actually before them previously, had to be and was determined by that redevelopment authority, a concept that conformed to the redevelopment plan. It found that concept acceptable and allowed us to move forward as a redeveloper who executes a redevelopment agreement to now come before you for particulars of the site plan. So the objector wishes to dismiss that process and ask you to ignore the standards. Standards that went through a very detailed review, consideration process that got us here this evening. And what are those standards, the bulk standards that we refer to? The objector and a particular issue with Mr. Gemma here tells you those standards really shouldn't mean anything. They shouldn't mean anything, and I know why he says it, because he can't argue the fact that those standards are being complied with. He made light of it in his testimony when he asked him that question. But the reality is, in your zoning ordinance, the definition of bulk regulations, which includes the issues they have, setbacks, side yards, height, FAR, all of those issues which are the bulk standards that are being debated here, are included in what's called the bulk envelope. Section seventeen point zero two point zero two zero of the definition states that the bulk envelope means the three-dimensional space within which a structure is permitted to be built, permitted. The bulk standards, the objectors and Mr. Gemma would like to tell you, you should ignore, despite the fact that they went through this rigorous process. The fact that this application complies with every single bulk standard in that redevelopment plan. Now, the objectors would also like to argue to you in their jurisdictional challenge that, well, really, the redevelopment plan is really being interpreted wrong, that it really is the underlying zoning that matters, even though the redevelopment plan specifically states, specifically states that this redevelopment plan standards supersede the zoning. The bottom line is, through our rigorous process, we develop redevelopment and bulk standards that are before this board, that this applicant complies with. And it's relevant, important for you to consider that, despite all the jurisdictional nuances that the objector would like to have you move off course as to what the fundamental thing that is before you this evening. We should look at this site plan, recognize that it meets these bulk requirements and move on to what really, I understand, is probably the heart of this, which is the parking variance. And again, I really, I really want to emphasize that, I think, Mr. Gemma, and I understand that as a licensed professional, a planner who's testified many times, I understand why he has to make the argument. But it really, really should bother you in looking at his credibility for someone to look at what is so fundamental to the municipal land use law that these bulk requirements are rights that an applicant has just as much as limitations that the applicant has, that he's permitted to utilize, should be ignored and stated to you that they really don't mean anything. He said, yeah, they're there, yeah, they comply with them, but you should consider that. Well, of course you have to consider that, it's fundamental to what you do. I will acknowledge to you that in the redevelopment plan and as indicated by Mr. MacArthur, there are certain design guidelines that there's a lot of discussion about, the type of building, the nature of the building itself, what it's made of, how it looks, all of that is very relevant. And I think it's important that you can, that you should be looking at that and looking at what is referred to in the redevelopment plan as the general and guidelines as opposed to the specific guidelines, both of which are in the plan. And I argue to you that all of my witnesses, in one form or another, have touched upon those issues before you. They've talked about the general guidelines, Mr. Schock did it, Kenyon Hughes did it. And I want to point out a number of things that are in those design standards and I'm going to try not to read the whole thing to you, I don't want to do that, I'm trying not to take a lot of time. But first of all, the overall design concept, which is identified on page nineteen of the redevelopment plan, states the proposed, while the proposed development permitted is of a higher density than is characteristic of the buildings currently on the campus, this plan itself anticipates verbally that you're going to look at development in this redevelopment area that is of a higher density than is on the campus. Consistent with what we've argued to you are bulk standards that we're complying with, which provide for development that's of a higher intensity than is characteristic on the campus. It also refers to. It also refers to how to look at building height and setting the building. And it refers to step designs may be appropriate to preserve lights, views, and to reinforce the scale of a particular site or an assemblage of lots to height massing and siting the buildings needs special care to reinforce existing relationships. That's a very valid standard. My clients have testified, their professionals have testified, what they have done to meet that requirement. And again, acknowledging that initially, the initial plan before this board had some deficiencies that had been corrected. And not only in terms of the step design that was now utilized in order to step from the fourth floor being strictly the whole building to stepping back to front of the building. And despite what Mr. MacArthur said, the plan does anticipate what that view is for the traveling public, not just people that are living next door, has to do with what a pedestrian sees when they walk on the sidewalk. It also refers to building design elements. The selection of a building design elements, for example, in the use of materials, fenestration, color, texture, should ensure that the treatment is harmonious with that prevalent in the area. And then it goes, again, I'll touch on it in a moment, but the testimony that was provided by my clients dealt specifically with that. Then there are specific buildings, I'm sorry, specific standards. First, regarding massing. The plan refers to large, horizontal buildings of limited height should be broken down into segments having vertical orientation. Reputation, I'm sorry. Repetition of base and traditional facade elements create patterns which help establish a sense of scale while allowing individual identity of each storefront. Mr. Schock testified as to specifically taking that in consideration in how the building facade ultimately came to being the way it is. Scale, a human scale should be achieved at ground level and along street frontages and entryways through the use of such elements as windows, doors, transoms, sidelines, columns, awnings, suits, bulkheads, airways. Again, testimony that was provided by my clients as to how they complied with that, by the types of materials they're using, stepping back to fourth floor, adding a porch element, looking at the building vertically rather than looking at this masked wall and horizontal utilization. I would like to specifically identify, in layman's terms, Mr. Broder indicated that they have completely redesigned the building facade by changing the modern style to a traditional residential design. Colonial brick shake and clapboard siding along with double-hung windows are simple but attractive residential finishes that have been introduced into the new building design. Eighty front dormers, mansard roofing, dentil moldings, and front entrance porch all help to tie this building into the immediate neighborhood. Again, from the developer's perspective, it's the thought process that went into the direction to the design architect to meet those requirements that are in the design guidelines in order to make this building more compatible to the neighborhood, recognizing that in the plan itself, it anticipates a higher-density building. Mr. Broder also indicated that we lowered the front of the building from four to three stories. The new front roof line will now tie with the height of the neighboring homes. This change has been made even though at four stories, the original building was within zoning compliance for height. And then finally, by stepping back both front corners, we softened the feel of the building and have eliminated the transformer variance. You recall that one of the original things in the application was variance for a transformer front? All that's been eliminated. Through the process of bringing this building to the point where it can reasonably meet those design guidelines in the spirit of what they're entitled to be able to build in accordance with the bulk standards. With regard to a little bit more of the detail, I do want to refer to the environmental impact statement because the environmental impact statement, even though being criticized for reasons I'm not going to clear on, it's several of these elements that I think it's important for me to reinforce them because they're laid out specifically in the environmental impact statement. In terms of building height, the proposed building, which is now 39.56 feet, is just approximately four point feet taller than the existing 17 Mine Street structure. So the building that was there previously, even at the fourth story level, this building is only four and a half feet higher than what was there, that now is not there, but was there when we started this application. More importantly, at the time, that 17 Mine Street building that was originally there was only one and a half feet off the property line. So you had a building that was only four and a half feet lower than what's being proposed. That was one and a half feet off the property line. Now, this new building is five feet off the property line in accordance with and in compliance with the bulk requirements of the plan. Porch element, a key aesthetic consideration is the appearance of the proposed building at the northeastally corner of the property, where the bended Mine Street exposes the front-side facades. For this visible location, the architect has designed an elevated porch with a roof which wraps around the corner of the building into the side yard. The porch feature is one that is commonly found among the buildings along Mine Street. Good examples include 13 and 31 Mine Street. It provides a pedestrian-oriented and aesthetically-compatible appearance of the building from the viewpoint of a pedestrian or driver along Mine Street. The front yard setback, which has been discussed. The proposed building will set back 10 feet from the Mine Street right away. Once again, in conformance with the setback requirements of the bulk standards. And it's not uncommon on the street. The setbacks of the existing buildings along Mine Street vary from approximately five to 10 feet, for example, 13 Mine Street, to approximately 30 feet, which is 15 Mine Street right next door, which we recognize. In fact, providing a front porch with a small staircase or stoop to provide pedestrian access from the sidewalk is commonplace along Mine Street. Examples of that include 14, 16, 28, and 30, and 32 Mine Street. And they're located across the street. Finally, with regard to the exterior materials, which I've indicated previously, the use of brick and traditional siding and shakes are the primary facade materials. It draws upon architectural vocabulary found within the existing buildings along Mine Street. The existing structures provide a number of examples of vernacular architecture that contain certain elements of high style, such as Italian, Second Empire, and Queen Anne Revival. The proposed building is entirely appropriate within this context because it utilizes many of the same design elements, such as partial mansard roofs, porch single shakes, and overhanging eaves, as well as double-hung windows and dormers, which are all commonplace along Mine Street. And finally, with regard to massing, the use of partial mansard roof and dormers has the particular effect of providing depth and visual interest to the facade and creates the appearance of a three-story roof line when viewed from the street. Along with the aforementioned materials and design elements, the massing of the front facade forms a visually-compatible building within the architectural context of Mine Street. So, yes, there are design guidelines, general and specific. Yes, one can look at these things in a subjective manner. They're not simply capable of being objectively reviewed as a 10-foot setback or a five-yard setback. But the applicant has gone to great lengths through the process of change in this building to meet those design guidelines in the redevelopment plan in order to create a building which admittedly, in this redevelopment plan, is intended to be a higher-density building, to make it visually and locationally compatible as best it can be with regard to the properties that are in that area. And that's what those design guidelines are intended for. And let me turn to the, really, I think, the biggest issue here, which is the parking variance. Admittedly, 43 spaces, where 96 are required. And we recognize that it's a variance. So there's testimony that's necessary to be provided with regard to a C2 variance. C2 variances, and I know that this board has heard many times, essentially, the law says the benefits have to outweigh the detriments. That's what a C2 is. It's to catch all variance that the municipal land use law enacted a number of years ago to eliminate having to look at the specific aspects of a property in terms of its topographics, as it's unusual or regular shapes. It's to catch all. The benefits outweigh the detriments. As we know, the parking requirement set forth in the plan is based strictly on the RSIS standard imposed statewide by the state. This blanket standard is applied statewide in cities and in both urban and suburban locations without any regard for any local conditions. It's a standard that history, and in New Brunswick in particular, cannot sensibly be applied statewide in all the different and varied situations without some ability to consider uniquely local conditions. That's why RSIS, through the DCA, gives great latitude to local reviewers such as yourself to vary these standards. And I want to reinforce this because I think it is a critical component here. To that end, the city of New Brunswick by letter dated May 27, 2014, was directly advised by the DCA that, as it relates to parking, and although Mr. MacArthur said, "Some state bureaucrat", some state bureaucrat, which happens to be the bureaucrat that deals completely with RSIS standards in this state, but he's some state bureaucrat. Only one of the resolutions has a variation to the RSIS. You should remember that Mr. Patterson and a number of approvals down to the state and was responded to in May of this year. It dealt with the number of parking spaces. That particular application approved fewer parking spaces for an 82-unit development than required by Table 4.4 of RSIS. The reason was proximity to other transportation options. The Site Improvement Advisory Board intends for local reviewers to have a great deal of flexibility over parking. NJAC, the administrative code 5:21-4.14C, specifies, "Alternate standards to those shown in Table 4.4 shall be accepted if the applicant demonstrates these standards better reflect local conditions." Factors affecting minimum number of parking spaces include: household characteristics, availability of mass transit, urban versus suburban location, and available off-site parking resources. Notice is unnecessary because the rule is written to allow reviewers to allow exceptions. What does that mean? We acknowledge that we still are required to have a variance. But the state-imposed standards that gave rise to the standard that was in that redevelopment plan to begin with is recognized by the state as one that you can vary, taking into consideration local conditions. And the testimony provided is that that standard was in there because it was required to be in there. It's required to be there, but it can be varied from. Even the objector's professional traffic consultant, Mr. Woodland Womia, admitted that this board has the power to vary that standard. The city did not freely create this standard, but it was compelled to impose it. So let us look at the support for such a variance that has now been testified to in this matter. So I want to go through a few of the items that I think are critical for you to look at when you consider whether or not this variance has been justified. The city's 2012 Master Plan Reexamination Report recommended a far lower standard for housing involving student housing. It's really fascinating. Here you have the redevelopment plan approved in 2012. It puts a standard in the plan for parking that's required by the state. And at the same time, does a master plan reexamination report that says the following. 2012 Master Plan Reexamination recommended one space per unit for 0.5 spaces per bedroom. That's a potential ratio for development that includes student housing. And I know I'd like to argue, well, I think we have to use reason here. Yes, it's open-market housing. Yes, we're going to have students on the first floor. Does anybody realistically think that this is not going to be predominantly student housing building? We all know this. That's where it's located. That's our primary spot for student housing. I think we have to be realistic here. The Master Plan Reexamination Report states that it should establish realistic parking ratios for onsite parking. If the project is limited to areas of walkability and mass transit access, then parking ratios could be lower than those of more suburban areas. If student housing is anticipated, a ratio of one onsite space per unit and/or 0.05 spaces per bedroom should be considered. If we were to apply that reexamination standard here, we don't need a parking variance because we comply with it. So the irony here is we're stuck with a standard that nobody locally believes in, that the state allows you to vary from, that our own master plan in the same year recommends something different, and we comply with it. I think that's compelling for this board to consider. To compound the issue, and again, I don't want to be overly critical of the objectors' professionals, but it really is ironic here that Mr. Womia, who testified with regard to, yes, you can vary the standard, but no, you didn't do a study. It says you have to do a study. You have to do a study. But he cites a master plan thesis that reads, he cites this in support of their position. And as he indicated through my cross-examination, this is what it actually says. "Student-oriented housing developments experience lower trip generation rates than generic multifamily apartments or condominiums. This phenomenon can be attributed to many students not owning cars and the fact that many trips are close to the campus and can be completed by bicycling, walking, or using public transit. The results suggest that student housing generates approximately one-third the amount of traffic as generic apartments." Now, I was their expert. That was his report. All of this seems to be moving us to the logical conclusion of what this parking standard really ought to be here. Yes, we need a variance because we technically are required to, but the facts and circumstances suggest it's justifiable. Actual experience. This became a little bit of a pushback between myself and Mr. Womia and also Mr. Gemma. Actual experience. You know, we're used to hearing traffic consultants, no offense, talk about IT standards, talk about what the studies show, and they talk about these things are national, all very relevant, I think, for us because we don't have a lot of guidance. We don't have a lot of things that we can actually point to to say what really works, except here. Here we do. Here we have an applicant who actually developed similar projects in the same locations. I mean, they pushed back against me about the locations. Well, two of them were around in the corner, and the other is a block from campus, the others are a block from campus, just like this project is. And they pushed back and said, "It's not relevant. We shouldn't be looking at that." Well, of course they didn't want to look at it. The reason they didn't want to look at it is because it hurt them. Because here we have actual experience of projects of a very similar form, which is why this project's developed the way it is, because it's been working. We have projects that have come online just within the last few years that have been either developed directly by construction management or they've been engaged in the construction or the design. You have 66 Psychard Street, 34 units with 31 spaces. 6 Psychard Street, 23 units with 18 spaces, that's 0.88%. 15 Union Street, 18 units and 11 spaces, 0.6%. 50 Union Street, which is 24 units and 17 spaces, 0.7. If you want to do the match, so you do it, 43 to 52 is 0.83. Then you have two projects that have recently been approved, one of which is now online, which is 12 Bartlett Street, 59 units with 39 spaces, which is 0.66. Well, I asked Mr. Lomia, "Did you look at those? Wouldn't they be relevant? Wouldn't it help to know?" Well, we're lucky because we don't have to rely on the ITT, "Well, that baby has stuff from Minnesota," whatever. We can look to see what's working around the corner. It doesn't work. And the answer was, he didn't do it. Okay. But remember when I asked him what his reason was? His reason was, quote, "It wasn't my client's charge." In other words, he didn't get paid to do it. He didn't say it wouldn't have been relevant. He said he'd get paid to do it, so he didn't do it. I think that undermines the credibility of that witness. I don't want to be too critical of him. I understand if he didn't get paid to do it, that's fine. But we're missing something that was relevant to consider here, that my clients considered when they designed the project. They just didn't back into a number. They don't want a project that they're going to own and operate to fail. They look to see what's worked. They've been on the cutting edge of developing these properties in the sixth ward because the university's not doing it, nobody else is doing it. But they've figured out the formula that works. And I asked, and I would have hoped that their professionals would have at least walked into the garages and opened to see, are they working? Are there empty spaces? Talk to the students. Find out who lives there. Not relevant. And I challenged Mr. Jemba to it, and I challenged him on this because as a planner, I felt that that's something that he should have at least considered. And he kind of laughed, and he said, "No, it wasn't important. Didn't matter." And I think that's a failure on their part. I think it's a failure because I think, I think it's a disservice to you as a board, it's a disservice to my client. My client has put a lot of climate effort in developing these projects and trying to find the right formula for parking and occupancy of these buildings because the planning office, you as residents of the city, and all of us who have had a lot of experience in watching things develop over the years know it's just as problematic to build too much parking. It's a problem. We've seen it time and time again in areas outside of the city. I think the city has done a great job revising its standards to determine what really works. And I think it was critically important here for us to be able to have looked at what actually this developer has been able to do and accomplish. And I think it's a shame that the Objectors didn't think that it was going to be relevant. My clients introduced the issue of the really innovative concept of car share. Now, we know that car share, whether we want to call it Zip Cars, how we refer to it. My clients prepare to commit to a car share concept, which we know has taken hold in other locations, but actually, here in New Brunswick, there's a car share component in the garage on the View. And, you know, it's becoming more and more relevant for people who really find it more convenient to do that than have a car. My traffic expert testified statistically how what they've been able to find in the brief studies is that it's significant, reduces the demand for vehicles for people who live in those facilities because they have the opportunity to schedule and drive those cars when necessary. And we're prepared to commit to that. My client was prepared and is prepared to pay for that, the costs associated with committing the car share in the building. We think that it would work without it, but we're prepared to do it because we think it's something that is for the benefit of the residents that are there. I think it will help people who are going to be residents to be able to have some alternative, and we're prepared to commit to that as a condition of approval. I think it's unfortunate when Objectors make fun of the elimination of parking permits being voluntarily given up, because I've seen that before. But the bottom line is, when you give up the parking permits, you can't park on the street legally. And the alternative, if you didn't do that, is you'd have additional residents, whether it's the 52 units or some less number, that would have more people who'd park on the street. So the reality is, by eliminating those parking permits, you're creating an additional benefit to the residents in the neighborhood who don't have to compete with people in this building for parking legally. And it is also a justification, in addition, to allow for the parking variance. RSIS standards acknowledge it. I think that all of us in the community would recognize that access to public and mass transportation is very relevant, particularly for people who would be living in this location. The applicants provide ample testimony as to the availability of public, university, and mass transit opportunities in the immediate area, and the walkability of this location to the campus, and the availability of public parking in proximity to the building. Some of the examples that were testified to, it's a five-minute walk to the College Avenue campus, less than a five-minute walk to the Student Center and to the Rutgers Bus Stop with over 10 bus lines. The Theological Seminary is 400 feet away from those seminarians living there. There are new bike lanes, and pedestrian improvements are currently underway on College Avenue, being developed as a result of this very redevelopment plan, which further encourages walkability and bicycle convenience for the residents. The New Jersey Transit Bus Stop is located just a short distance away on Easton Avenue. The New Brunswick Train Station, as even indicated by the Objectors' Council, is within, as he said, four blocks, I'll take that, four blocks from there to the train station. It's mass transit. There's different opportunities for mass transit. You've got Main Line also on Somerset Street. The only monthly parking is available at the Gateway and Wellness garages, and all within reasonable walking proximity to the location. Mr. Hughes testified, as is required for us to, for the record, as I said, as a balancing test for the C2 variance, positive versus the negative criteria. All of which I've outlined above provide a series of facts and circumstances which provide significant support and positive benefits to the public to grant a C2 variance. All those points underpin the positive rationale for seeing the variance as a positive decision to be granted rather than not in the public interest. Professional planner Kenan Hughes specifically laid out the balancing of all the positive reasons to grant the variance as opposed to any possible negative impact. And I won't repeat them. You've heard his testimony. By promising less parking onsite, the project will generate less traffic on the streets, particularly Mine Street, and have less vehicles entering and exiting the building. And I think that's important to note because the Objectors have made a great deal about how congested Mine Street is, how it's difficult to find parking. By reducing the number of vehicles, rather than attempt to comply with the requirement or at least placing more vehicles, you're adding less traffic onto the street. So it's hard to argue both ways. I don't think the Objectors want to see 96 parking spaces and 96 vehicles. So it's a positive to grant this variance because you get less traffic. Your project is actually generating on Mine Street. It's a better-designed building with parking in an enclosed garage, and not overparked in a larger garage, or worse, even a surface parking lot. A project that promotes walkability in a non-auto-centric environment in close proximity to the campus and seminar. And I would indicate, and I won't recite them, but as you know, planners will generally indicate through their professional testimony also advances certain purposes of the municipal land use law, and he specifically identified purposes A, E, G, and H of the municipal land use law, which provides an underpinning to the benefits of this variance. Additionally, the project's intended to provide the correct number of parking spaces for this building and resist the mistake of overparking the facility. Thus, it's consistent with the city's stated master plan recommendation for parking needed for this type of facility and its vision for the College Avenue campus. And actually, Mr. Hughes didn't identify any discernible detriments to grant this parking variance. He also opined that this variance can be granted because it can be reconciled with the master plan. The overall project's designed to comply with the 2012 redevelopment plan, with the exception of the parking standard, given 2012, coincidentally, as indicated. The master plan reexamination report identified a parking standard that this project complies with, so it can easily be reconciled. With regard, very briefly, to the waiver, and I'm not going to get into an argument. It's a legal issue that I assume somebody will deal with. This is a waiver. It is not a variance. It's in the site plan ordinance. It's always been treated by the city as a waiver. Mr. Bogan testified as to its adequacy and the functionability of the garage with the entryway and the 24-foot aisle, as did my traffic consultant, Mr. Oliva. So we stand by that testimony. I want to talk briefly about the historic district issue, this claim of the historic district. I wish to comment on the many references to an historic district that's been claimed by Objectors. And I submit to you, it's nothing more than a red herring, injected into this application in an attempt to create confusion and to imply that it creates some form of legal hurdle to the board in approving this application. Let's be clear on several points. Number one, there's been no determination made that there exists any historic district. The August 8, 2014 letter only indicates that they may pursue an application for registration, which has not occurred as far as we're aware. And I submit to you, I guess this is just another state bureaucrat. Because I don't know what makes my state bureaucrat any worse than his state bureaucrat. It's a red herring. There exists not a single property on Hyrum Street or in the entire purported district that's listed either in the state or federal Historic Register. Now, I know they like to reference Mr. Drinkwater's beautiful home as a historic home. Maybe it could be a historic home. It's not. It's not on the register. David's lived there for many, many years. He never took the steps to put it on the Historic Register. It's relevant, because it's not relevant to this application. That fact matters. The information that gave rise to the letter from the state was from a survey of citywide properties conducted by the city as part of its 1980 Tertentennial celebration. Since then, now, 1980. Since then, not a single building mentioned in the survey has been listed as historic on any register. The 1980 survey was known and available to the property owners on Mine Street and the general public, and didn't give rise to any interest in identifying a district for 34 years until now. And I venture to say that even as of this date, the majority of the property owners who own property in the area and on Mine Street, who would be affected by this designation, haven't been consulted for their opinions and advised as to what restrictions would be placed on their properties as a result. Notwithstanding, as has been previously stated and testified to, the design guidelines set forth in the redevelopment plan have been carefully considered by the design team in its revised building plan, which serves to better achieve harmony with the existing buildings in its vicinity on Mine Street. Those DCLs have been testified to by my professionals, and I hope I've outlined them to you to understand that there is a sensitivity to the existing buildings that are there. We recognize, and no one's suggesting here that there isn't some impact on the immediate neighboring properties. We understand that. But we, as an applicant, have come here with rights with regard to a redevelopment plan that sets standards that we complied with. And we, to a great degree, resent having these types of red herrings thrown at us, but we understand it, because we do understand that there are impacts on people. That's what redevelopment sometimes does. But the redeveloper has rights as well. And I asked the board to consider that. I asked the board to consider, and again, appreciate all your time with regard to all that's been put before you. Once again, I don't want to get into the jurisdictional issues. I'm sure that will be dealt with at another time and place. But again, I appreciate your time, and I hope that the board will consider approval of what we have before you in our application.
Thank you, Mr. Kelso. We're going to take a five-minute recess.